...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I agree with Councilor Rebar and Councilor Kusheen. I do think that some type of regulation is required, both points about environmental and the commercial operators are good ones. And to the point about commercial operators, I would add to the fact that there is a significant tax inequity. So it's not just regulations that our commercial operators have to meet as far as the environment, but they're also paying commercial taxes on their property. And the vacant lots that have a trailer, three trailers, eight trailers, are paying vacant tax rates, which is hardly anything. And it's not money that supports the provision of services to those lots. When you're paying a vacant lot tax rate, it should be on the understanding that that land is not being used. And indeed, when there are trailers on those lands, they are being used and they are using the roads and they're using the landfills. And they'd like the firefighters to show up if they start a grease fire. So our campfire goes out of control. So, you know, along with the environmental regulations, I also think that we owe it to our commercial tourist operators who are following the rules and are paying the extra costs associated with running these types of establishments, so that there is some kind of equity for on the taxes or the fees and the costs that the municipality incurs. Because otherwise, those costs of the roads and the landfills are being supported by residents who just are regular residential residents. So that's what I would add to the discussion. Thank you.
To get their feedback, I, what I found is it was a pretty clear what the issues are and what they aren't. And so the need for an extensive door-to-door consultation, as was done, probably isn't necessary. I have spoken to her worship, though, with respect to, you also probably don't want to have something that just slides, something which, you know, given the contentious nature of it. So perhaps we can come back with a recommendation that could streamline how it would be. We've done public consultations now in a variety of different ways. And perhaps we can do it a little bit more using technology and perhaps having an open meeting, you know, to have everybody come. You know, despite what you hear, West Nippising is not that big. Maybe the open meeting, the one meeting is held in Werner is a central point to have it. But I don't see that the comments would have changed. I think those who want to see regulations will still be there. And those who wish to live and let live will still want to live and let live.
Appreciate that. And just my final, I support the idea of putting some regulations in place, because I don't think we can sustain very much longer out in kind of Wild West where everybody does what they want. And I also appreciate that we also have a full-time bylaw officer, which the municipality didn't have four years ago. So that's going to help, I think, with the enforcement piece that Councilor Rebar mentions. Thanks for those comments, Mr. Barbeau.
Thank you. Any more questions? I do have some questions with respect to the report. With the increase of trailers, I know they're used like a seasonal residence possibly. And with the cost of building, are they being used to help alleviate the costs so that they can enjoy property beside the river as a seasonal lodging, so they can enjoy it as well as?
Well, without even looking at the report, I would suggest to you, Madam Chair, that those who wish to have trailers fixed kind of semi-permanently on a lot are probably doing so because it is more cost-effective and they can enjoy it. So that's probably an underlying benefit to anyone who is, you know, using trailers as opposed to fixed dwellings, right? So, yes, so that would go without saying. And I don't want to get into a debate at this stage, nor would I ever want to get into a debate on a matter that council should be deliberating. But yes, that would be the issue. I think, based on what I'm hearing, what we should be doing is bringing back, if council concurs that they'd like to see some movement on this file, coming back with a consultation process, first step. And then based on any additional information that we don't already have in Ms. Charms' reports, if there's any pearls of wisdom out there, then we would be coming back to you with a draft report based on the consultation and some sort of compromise solution that would be able to satisfy what council's needs are. And hopefully, you know, as somebody indicated, not everybody's going to be happy on either extreme. But we did, I think, Ms. Ducharme provided a good compromise draft last time. And I think that, you know, we would be looking at. So we'd probably look at setbacks. If anybody thinks that we don't have problems in the spring along the Sturgeon River, they, I think they have short memories, because every year it's the same. And I do believe in all of the consultations that nobody wanted to have or swim or utilize fresh water that may be contaminated with effluent. And so those two baseline. The other issue that was a big source of contention was, okay, that's fine. But what do you do with the existing trailers? Do your grandfather, pardon the sexist impression, do you keep them there? Do you, and do you license the trailers? How do you know what trailers existed before and not? So those are the kind of things that we would be bringing to council with options for consideration. But I think the first step, given the suggestions to repull our residents, is to basically come back to you with an idea, have council approve that, and then do it with a timeline. And then hopefully, we'll get this file closed, you know, in the next three or four months.
And any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilor Rebar?
Just to add on to the public consultation, portion I would, I would now think of as you were speaking is to get those enforcement authorities at that public consultation, because I think within the past four years, it's boomed a little more, the issue. So I think everyone would have a better understanding of the legalities and their jurisdiction for the different aspects of dealing with trailers. So it might be a good idea to have them all involved.
I'm all for enforcement people pressing during contentious issues.
So if there's no other comments or questions, then we can vote on updating the consultation, the staff to organize a consultation with the residents. Everyone in favor? Pass. The next item on the planning committee is consideration of engineers' report for the Quattro Drain Minor Improvement Project. Mrs. Ducharme?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordinarily, on a drain consideration, there would be an engineer present. But there is a new process under the Drainage Act that was recently adopted by the province, where minor improvements have a more streamlined approach. So I have written authorization by the engineers to make this presentation. So basically, what we're dealing with here is a one-petitioner, one-property project, which has no financial impact to the municipality whatsoever. The owner of the property requires an upgrade to the municipal drain currently on the property for infrastructure, which isn't, which isn't in the existing report. And in order to bring that infrastructure into the report and have him be eligible for the grants that the province provides to agricultural properties, this needs to go through this process. So, like I said, this is basically a large culvert that will be installed at the back of a property on Highway 17. The cost of the project is about $23,000. Those are the engineers' estimates, obviously. There's always an effort to keep costs as low as possible. And we're not having an engineer here tonight, that helps. In any event, so what we're considering here is the report provided by the engineer. You'll see attached to the documents provided, the petitioner has indicated in writing that they wish to proceed, because that is part of the consideration, is to ensure that the original petitioners wish to proceed. Mr. Delorme had indicated that he wishes to proceed with this project. So what is being asked of council is to provide any, if they have any concerns or technical information about the report that they would wish to bring forward. Otherwise, we would be providing first and second reading to this provisional bylaw later on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If there's no questions, then we would just go to deal with the regular portion of the meeting.
Okay, so we'll put that regular portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that completes the planning committee. I'll pass it back to the chair to get in there.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We'll move on now to general government. And there's only one item under the general government, and that is the reopening of the municipal office in Werner. So in July, we did receive a petition accompanied by a delegation advocating for the reopening of that office. And Mr. Barbeau has prepared a significant memo on the topic for our consideration. I'll pass it to
Mr. Barbeau for a comment. Thank you, Your Worship. Prior to that, did you wish to just provide a quick update? Our, apologize to the public, our technology, given the fact that we've been down a month, needed some upgrading. And we only caught that just now. And so we're now live. And so, Madam Mayor, perhaps there were two issues prior to the going live.
Okay, so we did discuss briefly a petition regarding the Kiffling landfill and extending hours for that. Because it is a budgetary consideration, we have acknowledged the receipt of that petition. And it will come forward during the budget process to discuss whether that's something that we can do within the budget that we have for 2024. The second item that came before we were able to broadcast was the transfer of the Sandy Island Road allowances. We did receive additional information from our municipal solicitor as well as some additional information from the proponent. And the decision by council, I believe unanimously, was to keep the road allowances under the municipality's name or the entity transfer at this time. So just for the people who are watching, who are interested in those items, this is a brief update for you. Thank you very much, Mr. Barbeau. So I'll pass it back to
sort of with that, okay.
For the Werner office.
My memo gives a little bit of history, just because I've been here almost that long. The Werner office was, it used to be the municipal office for the township of Caldwell, which encompasses the community of Werner and some surrounding rural areas as well. The municipality, the township of Caldwell, acquired that school. That was declared surplus, I think, in the early 90s, if I'm not mistaken. And that school was acting as a multi-use facility for the township of Caldwell up until amalgamation in 1999. So there was a town clerk and clerk treasurer and some staff that were in there. Upon amalgamation, as I indicated, there were, and the concept is a good one geographically. The majority of our population density is on the eastern portion of West Nippising. So the majority of the activity is Sturgeon and Springer Township, which surrounds it in Cache Bay. However, there is a lot, there is a lot of land and some people that are west of that. And the largest cluster, obviously, being Werner. So those, the decision back in the day were to keep those two offices open. Field was kept open, and as was Werner. Now, in Field, there was a former employee of Field Township that was there. And prior to my arrival, which was September of 2000, there would have been a decision made, so probably within about a year of amalgamation, to actually close the Field Office due to lack of activity. The decision made at that time by people prior to me, I think Mr. Carell, who is blessed to have more experience than I do, is here and would remember that. And so the clerk that was there, not the legal clerk, the person that was handling things, was moved over to Sturgeon Falls to the main site, because there simply wasn't any activity. Now Werner was different. We had an assistant clerk rural that was there. She was working there and she was a fixture in the Werner community. And she was busy as well at that time, as I indicated, because she had, and she was managing, primary portfolio was municipal drains. And we just read one. So the municipal drains was a very active file early on in amalgamation, because the former unincorporated townships did not avail themselves of the municipal drainage program where farmers can get two-thirds subsidy. And so there was a big influx of work and petitions that were being received. In fact, so much so that the council of the day passed a policy limiting the municipal expenditure on any one of those petitions to $60,000 a year. That's how busy it was. Now, that stream of activity had subsided and probably subsided in the around 2010 to 2015, where we started to see less petitions coming through. And now what we do is we have a lot of municipal drains, which are those for the public, those agricultural, those ditches that go in farmers' fields that help grab the water and provide more cultiv-, more land to cultivate in farmers' fields. So they're a great asset. But there aren't any new petitions going on. That combined with how we manage our drainage system, a lot of how we manage our drainage system now with the advent of technology, we handle it differently. The billables are handled differently and are centralized with billing. There's less manual, manual work that was used back in the day. So the activity of that site dwindled down to approximately four visits a week. And of the four visits a week, you know, a lot of them might have been social, because the, I hope she's listening, the former assistant clerk rural was a very pleasant person. And we miss her. So we still see her walking around town. So, so come 2018, prior to COVID and everything like that, we receive information that that building is, has some serious structural issues. We hire a structural engineer. And in fact, what they find out is they, we had to close the building down because we had to deem it unsafe or portions of it unsafe until some remedial work could be done, even in the place that you see now. The one place that could not be saved was the, what they call the former gymnasium of that facility. In that facility, then, we were forced to tear down that portion and to make some changes to that site. So at that point, when we closed that down, we needed to do some retrofitting for OMAFRA, the Ministry of Agriculture and Food. I don't know the acronym and they change a lot. So the council of the day were extremely adamant that that was a jewel and is a jewel for, and a resource for our farming community. And they wanted to ensure that we found some space for them. If not there, somewhere in the community. There were attempts in the community to find private sector space for them, but the rates just were not acceptable. And so the decision was taken to put them in the former municipal portion of the building. And that, and so based on that, we never really reopened. I think council of the day was because in our opinion, the expenditure versus the return simply just warranted. And so we're at the point now where, so council is, or we've received a petition. And council wants to explore whether we can put an additional person or move a person to Werner to deal with the face-to-face. I certainly am a person that values face-to-face. I hate even going to terminals. And I still like seeing a teller at the bank. But at what expense? And so it isn't as simple to just move one of our employees here. They're all kind of interconnected and provide support to one another through a management information system as well that's interconnected here. And so to move a person out there would be a bit of a challenge. The cost of an additional person, as was indicated, would be approximately $75,000. I pass this on to Ms. Fraddick, who likes to provide the exact details. So I think she said 76. And then there's other costs of renovations. It's not that simple to just take a classroom and basically renovate it into having all of the technology, all of the wiring, having an accessibility, an A O E D A acceptable front counter and so on. So we estimate the cost of that to be approximately, I think she, we put $150,000 here, furniture, electrical. As you know, with our estimations, things cost a lot of money now. And so I don't know that that's entirely inaccurate. So the initial cost would be, so it would be a budgetary issue. And then the other issue, as I indicated, my recommendation, is perhaps we can explore other ways of decentralizing and serving our public, such as using satellite offices that are quasi-municipal. Anyway, they are municipal, they're just standalone boards. But perhaps we can look at exploring partnerships with our library staff and finding some way to work with them. The assertions that were made in the presentation are also a little bit, they're valid from their perspective, but not exactly accurate. If you think that we can have a person that is a customer service rep there that would be able to answer the needs of anybody who drops by, that didn't even exist with our assistant clerk rural. This is a municipality that offers very detailed, complex services, with very detailed, complex files. So it would be just a pass-along to the experts, either in sewer and water, public works, community services, parks and rec, arena, general government taxation. So it's not quite as simple as that. So if it's a matter of collecting revenues, as I indicated, you know, we can find a place. So I could comment again on other matters that were raised, which took me back a little bit. I think that Werner is actually very well-served. And there have been significant investments in Werner. And there continues to be significant investments in Werner, as there is in other aspects of the municipality. There are roads that have been repaved. IPM has some roads repaved. There are new playground structures. We've invested, and the whole reason for the fact that we have harmonized sewer and water rates was because of Werner. When we invested $2 million in the year 2000, I believe it was Mr. Carell, for the plant disinfection back then. For Werner to have absorbed that would have basically bankrupted them. And the decision was made by one of the first councils of the day to harmonize so that we can maximize the buying power and the paying power that 14,500 people have as opposed to 1,400. So, and there is a variety of other things. That's the sideline, and I just wanted to address that, because I think that past councils would agree that there have been a lot of investments in that area, as there are in other areas. And we strive to keep all of our residents happy. So as I indicate, you know, we're trying to find ways of rationalizing our buildings. And we're trying to find ways of doing more with less. And we're looking at, you know, building analyses and that kind of thing, so that we can streamline our operations, find money so that we can place going forward. My opinion, and it may not be well-received by some, but that, this would be taking a step backwards, in my opinion. But I leave it to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for the description of the issues there. I'll open the floor to our members of council for any questions or comments you would have on this. Councilor Paudern?
I have to talk. I guess I disagree with some of your findings. I'd like to start by thanking Monsieur Robert Desbienz et Lotham for the delegation last month. J'ai décidé de partir cette pétition parce que quand j'attendais, parce que tout que j'attendais, tout des portes, l'hôtesse pendant les élections, c'est quand allons-nous ouvrir l'office à Werner. Avant l'amalgamation, on avait resté à Werner que les services seraient pas diminués ou retirés. Ça, ça a resté dans la mémoire du monde, ça revient. L'office à Werner permet aux gens de Werner, des quartiers 5, 6, 7 et 8, d'avoir accès aux services municipaux sans avoir conduit la strujefance. Je comprends que je peux pas tout avoir les services là, mais en allant à Werner, la personne peut contacter Sturgeon. Ok, que c'est qu'on s'est obligé de se dépasser à Sturgeon. C'est ça le nom, que la majorité du monde veut. Ça, c'était la raison principale. Mais dernièrement, une deuxième raison. I also think that the municipal drain office should also return to Werner with all its maps. Having that person trained on municipal drain and available anytime. I heard lots of complaints from farmers lately on access to personnel, access to drainage maps, access to get somebody to come to visit a drain when there's a problem. Monsieur B T used to be a retired farmer, and he was the superintendent of the drains. He had the expertise. And I wish we could find someone like that again. So I think we have a duty to improve on municipal drains, especially after reading a letter from the Ministry of Agriculture. And I'll just read you a couple lines. "It is very apparent that your municipality has neglected its responsibilities to the Drainage Act. And I've allowed their own bylaws to be disregarded. What assurance can you give us that your network of municipal drains will be managed more appropriately in the future? And that's the Drainage Coordinator from the Ministry of Agriculture."
What's the date of that letter?
The date is The date is September twelve, two thousand seventeen. And from that letter, it's the Gria Drain and it hasn't to this day, it hasn't been resolved. So Madam Mayor, remember when we're in field, Mr. Mr. Fideli was all proud of the farming around here? Good, yeah. But I don't think he'd be very happy to to see that later and and what's going on from what I hear from some of the farmers around. I I wrote in a big combine. That's why everything came to a circle there and this is everything is coming together. We're going down and he's got a big screen. It's all. It shows. Comment je dirais ça?
Ton français, c'est bon?
Ça montre comment ça rapporte à l'aube. Ok, on s'en va là puis ça peut dire ok. On envoie mille livres à l'aube. Et quand on fait un bout puis on vient, on fait même pas deux cent cinquante. Ok, lundi, c'est parce que j'ai un problème avec un des drains qui on parle pas des des gros municipal drains. On parle des lignes de la chaîne. Il y a des chaînes qui peuvent avoir vingt-cinq tonnes, cinquante tonnes. Ça c'est ceux-là qui font défaut. C'est ceux-là que c'est bien important d'avoir les maps pour. Là, c'est ça qui me dire, on a de la misère à trouver la map pour localiser le drain ex- drain de la chaîne. Ça c'est pour ça que c'est important à mes yeux que l'office à Werner. Dans ma tête, Werner, c'est le centre de l'agriculture avec la coop, le feed mill, la coop de geniale, la gazpare, tout était, le monde revient un peu partout. Et en même temps, l'office est là. Ça c'est. Ah, c'est pas fini, c'est ça. On est pas obligé d'avoir tout à Sturgen. Merci.
Isla, she has a question, comment? Counselor Yekeski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to support because, like you said, the farmers are all located around here. There's some in Sturgen. But if the farmers, if they decide to go to Sturgen, it's probably on the weekend, the office is closed. And during the week, I mean, they they work every day like from morning till sunrise to sundown. So they don't have time to really kind of space themselves when they have to work and get their crops in within a certain time. Because they're weather dependent too. So it's closer and it's easier for them.
More questions, comments? Counselor Restul?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the work that went into the information that was provided to us here. My thought is, we just went through not too long ago, a budget process where that was difficult and we looked at figures and what we could provide to our community members across the community, trying to keep our tax increase as minimal as we can with the view of long term and some of the other challenges that we're still going to face this coming tax year, probably the next tax after that. We did cut some significant projects from there. And we came to a number that was probably higher than most wanted, but we understood that that's something we had to do to kind of stabilize things here and get us moving in the right path. And looking at our long term plan that we had for our term here to to keep moving ahead, you know, proactively and as efficiently as we could. I don't think an investment of quarter million dollars is something that's an easy yes or no. At the very least, for myself, would be something that we maybe discuss at next year's budget deliberations. But again, what you're receiving for how much is being invested? If if we're looking at the numbers on the report that we received, and I appreciate and I appreciate we have a big municipality, lots of different communities within. But for that kind of investment, for a service where we're getting maybe four people a week coming in, to me is pretty significant. And I I didn't receive the letter. I had no idea of the letter that you shared tonight from eight years ago, seven years ago. My own thinking is if it's, I'm just talking for myself, if I had a significant issue and I knew that I could go somewhere and help rectify it and seven years later, I still haven't, I don't know where the where the onus lies in terms of me as an individual or the service that's provided a couple blocks from my house. I think, you know, then could be some effort to rectify that, especially within a seven year period. But I'll I'll stop there. I just think it's certainly not anything that's a right now kind of answer. And even long term, I think it's very significant for that type of service. And I appreciate the information that Mr. Baur provided with another full office in field that just didn't have the influx of people who needed to 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 get their service from there. And that's why that decision was made then, similar to what was made a couple of years ago in that twenty eighteen for Werner. I like that there's options here. We can look at some of the existing municipal infrastructure to have maybe some of those information pieces like the maps. Maybe they can be, how is that the library? Something, we can be creative with this. I don't think the answer has to be we need a full time staff member in a full time office that may see four-ish people a week. And I think it was a great point made too as well. And even through you, Counselor Pellerin, with something as specific as municipal drains, someone's going to walk in that office. It's not very likely that the person there is going to have all of that information. And they're going to redirect that person to the expert within our staff to get that work done. So that's my comments. I think the very best, it's something that we discuss at budget time. But I certainly couldn't support that right now. We don't have the funds to do it right now anyways, without cutting other things that we've already decided through our budget process. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Seigny?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe what Mr. Restor, Counselor Resto was saying is that, and I agree with what Counselor Resto was saying, is something that we will need to look at maybe at the budget time. However, one other thing that I think maybe we could consider if the time comes is to have an other, not an office, but somebody there at part time. If we do have employees here that can go there on a Tuesday and a Thursday and that way they're made aware and their farmers are made aware that, listen, if you have issues, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we will have somebody that is an F T E here in 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 this office that can go there and work from there. Or on a Tuesday from eight till noon, here are your hours, or from noon till four, here are your hours, and specify so that we are able to assist them. However, I agree with Counselor Resto that adding another F T E to the amount of staff that we have right now is definitely not in our in the budget. And if it's only somebody that's going there twice a week, maybe an office in the library or something like that to assist the individuals, where we're not encountering a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of renovations would be a better idea or a better process.
Thank you very much, Counselor Seigny. Counselor Pelerin?
Madam Mayor, I'll just add a little comment is I think we're a society that says, I need. When you say that, now I want it now. I think what the people in Werner and and the farmers or whatever that area, they need something. They should request to Monsieur Pellerin their needs and we'll be able to find solution. I think these maps should be in digital format. All farmers are digitally inclined. And what we should be doing is maybe knowing what they actually need and supply that information, maybe without them having to visit an office, which would let let them spend more time in the fields and do what their specialty is in growing crops. So
They are digital.
Yeah. So that's, I think we should create a solution. But until we get all the wants, what they want, and try to find a proper solution without actually busting the budget or increasing our tax rate, just because they were told they weren't going to lose the office in Werner, while we did close it. It's unfortunate, I understand, but times have changed. We're in a digital age and I think there should be a compromise on that side. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baur.
Yeah, I would just point out that I completely support and looking at a mechanism where we do have a presence. And I and if there were, and I do like that face to face conversation because otherwise there's a disconnect between our residents and our and our public. Yes, you can obviously call your council, but I would point out to you, and I am aware of the service request. If you if you use the service request system and ask, most of the time what will happen is there's a phone call here. But when it's a drain, our our staff go out on site. So they do go out. Now, if you look historically at the drainage system, there was a gap in quality of service that dates back about six to seven years with the engineering firm, with some of the with some of the folks that that have taken up the slack. I won't comment on any names mentioned in Werner. However, we did have local people here that were that were all trained on municipal drain management and municipal drain maintenance. And and now we have it that we've hired actually. And we have people in our public works department that are trained. And we have a public works yard that is worked that works in our with our public works management with that. So we do attend in person to different people's sites. Now, the letter that Mr. Vanderbe of two thousand sixteen was very specific to the drain that you mentioned on Betty Road. And and that may or may not be resolved at a certain point. And it may not be resolved to the satisfaction of the owner that wanted it resolved in a different way. I'm not sure what the status is. But rest assured that we are meeting the requirements of the Municipal Drainage Act, the legislative requirements. And I would point out to you that and Mr. Vanderbe has offered to come up to council, to speak to council about the municipal drain so you can get a better understanding from him. And he is the guru in the province of the Drainage Act. So perhaps we can schedule something in the fall so you can get a better understanding of the of what he's talking about.
Thank you. I'll just say a brief word about servicing the agricultural community. So we do have an economic development advisory committee that's been very active and very involved. And actually, at our last meeting, we talked about having a discussion that focused on the agricultural sector in September, October. And, you know, I think it might be a really good opportunity for that committee to invite some representatives, Madeleine Bogory from the O F A, and understand the ways that the municipality can assist the agricultural community to grow, what kinds of like where where the gaps are and address those. And and it's separate from actually having a physical office. But we're talking about serving the needs of of a the agricultural community, which is a huge support economically to us. I think there, like Dan said, there are ways to make sure that we're actually solving the problems people have instead of putting a bandaid on something. So, you know, I I think I don't want people to leave with the impression that that we undervalue the the contribution of agriculture to the local economy and and what it means to the community. But I think that, again, I agree with Dan, where, you know, we are in a digital age now. I mean, my mother's seventy six years old and I don't know that she has written an actual check in the last ten years. Some, you know, people, including up to people my mother's age, are paying their bills online and downloading their bills online and getting their bills delivered by email. And, you know, the need to actual actually physically go into an office for for very much anymore has has really changed. And it's not just, you know, people of the younger generation that that have embraced technology, but it really is a you know, for the most part, I'd say eighty percent of people are now pretty adept at managing their their basic tasks, you know, whether it's paying your tax bill or downloading a bylaw on on the internet, using their their tablets and such. So just to leave it at that. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Koshin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So going through the report, I tend to agree there's some considerable financial implications if we do decide to move ahead in reopening the office in Werner. I understand that, you know, working professionally in Werner and having friends and family in the industry as well, I know that there's a need to keep the OMAFRA office there too so we can't just, you know, bum the bum the ministry and just walk in. We need to keep that asset in in the community. When reading through the report, I I took some notes, but I also liked the the discussion too. And what struck with me is, you know, yes, there's financial implications, but should we be sacrificing services for residents? And at the end of the day, I think we need to find a happy medium. I like the idea of libraries becoming, you know, extensions of the municipal office, like service centers. But that also brings me to what I hear a lot in my area too is we're far, Jerome, we're far. It takes us forty five minutes to drive to Sturgen. It takes us an hour. And I'm thinking the idea of having kiosks, not necessarily just in libraries, but working with community groups like the Menetville Community Center volunteers, the Leving Community Center volunteers, and looking at what structures already exist. And if it's a day every two weeks or having that person kind of having like the idea of that, you know, a full time person from, let's say, the surgeon office going, let's say, once a week or given days to at least, you know, they can get bills paid. And at least if they know they have one day, you know, people can go in and you know, at least it wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be necessarily investing a quarter million dollars, you know, first first year, so there is less financial implications. But I would I would like to see this discussion part of the the council budget deliberations hopefully this fall or even early next year. Because I think if if we work on capitalizing on existing infrastructure we already have, not necessarily retrofitting anything, but also working with our community, which I think we can kind of can kind of find a happy medium where we're providing services. It's not overburdening, you know, the taxpayers. And at the same time, you get, you know, services out to the communities. So I understand, let's say, like, for example, there's four visits in Werner that was based in two thousand eighteen. I would say there'd be, you know, quite less visits in Menetville and in Leving, but that's just the makeup of the communities. We're not, you know, bigger and bigger communities like Sturgeon Falls or Cash Bay. But I think if we have that that discussion on how we can be creative, I'd be for that, but not not right now giving the financial implications.
You bring your mic. Any else? Counselor Robert?
I have three, Madam Chair. The only one who didn't speak, so I figured I'd say something here. But I know it's a serious matter for the people of Werner. For myself, I'm not not used to this kind of issue, you know? It's not very far for me, so I understand. I sympathize with people who have to drive far from wards like in River Valley or Maveng or Menetville. It wouldn't be very fun to just come pay a bill, but there is online banking. I know it's not for everyone, even I don't do it yet. I like to come in and get my receipt. But it's it's for the value and based off of who can help or how many people it can help as well, in my opinion. And I understand it would help some people, even if it's just a handful, that's great because you're helping people. But then at what cost, right? And that's where I'm not so sure. So that's why I'm going to get the budget deliberations. If we'd have more information, we could go on from there. But just we were just talking about trailers earlier. So anyway, we can get maybe a mobile office. You know, you have a different section from time to time just to receive bills. I know, sorry, that's shocking. But there wouldn't be a there wouldn't be a washroom. But not just to pay bills with the debit card or whatever it may be. Maybe that would, right, you just drive one day and one during tax season. Yeah, sure. No, no cash, just that. But maybe that would be an option to help people pay their bills in those online areas. Some serious jokingness.
Counselor Jesse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just with distance, like you mentioned, Counselor Revard is, I think every area has a library, right, somewhere? And then there in the library, there's internet. Because I know with River Valley, the internet is not I know with River Valley, the internet is not the most stable and not everybody has the internet. So, like I said, one day rotating, then they can go pay their bills right in River Valley rather than coming to come. It's a great idea for future consideration. Thank you.
Okay. You know, what I've heard, I think, from the council here is that, you know, we do want to look for ways that we can serve all of our residents while still being mindful of the bottom line. Many of you have referenced taking this into budget, and so I would say at this point, my recommendation would be to leave it with staff to look at ways that we could augment services in some of the outlying areas, ideas like the library, kiosks or whatever, and what kind of implications those services would have, like whether it's, whether... Everybody laughed at the mobile unit trailer, but I'm like, maybe that, you know, we can think outside the box. I mean, we are in, we do serve a very, very large geographic area, so to try to come up with solutions that do serve the residents of Living and River Valley and Werner, it doesn't necessarily have to be one permanent office, but maybe there are other ways that we can do that, that would be more cost-effective and actually serve a broader range of our residents. So if council's happy, I would ask for a okay to leave it to budget and have that come back, and we can have a little bit more of that discussion. And budget will be earlier, a little earlier this year, and I know that our staff is already looking ahead. So would everybody be in favor of that as a go-forward on this item for now? And I know you're all nodding, but I'll take your hand, please. Thank you. Thank you. That was a really great discussion, everybody. I think everybody brought good points, and I'm sure that between us all, we'll come up with a solution. We have 10 minutes. Okay, so I will, we have two items under Community Services, and for that, I will pass it to our Chair, Counselor Rebar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So two items tonight, and we can first have the cash bay rink tender. And the memo, it shows that there was a tender that came in about $177,000 over the approved budget of $137,000, $138,000. So it's being suggested to do some light repairs at an approximate cost of $4,500. I'll let Monsieur Poulain elaborate on that.
Well, that's a great summary, Counselor Rebar. Unfortunately, it's a trend we're seeing where we're issuing requests for quotes or tenders, and prices are coming way over what we had projected as far as our budgets. Unfortunately, at this case, we don't find that the bid that we received for the scope of work being done, that it's a reasonable cost or a reasonable bid that we've received. So as an option, we've looked at the facility, we are confident that we could, with some minor repairs, have that rink operational as it is and safe for the public to use for another season. And then ask council if they so wish to defer this project to the 2024 capital budget. That would give the residents the opportunity to still have an outdoor rink for the upcoming season and provide us, hopefully, with some better pricing and more competitive bids come next year. We would also, if council would authorize us to defer it to 2024, one recommendation is, would be to go out to tender early in the year so that contractors that are planning ahead, hopefully, will get more than one contractor bidding and see a good competition on that. So in a nutshell, Counselor, that's it. Any questions, feel free.
Madam Mayor?
I thank you, through you, you have my questions, please.
Sure.
Excellent. So there was, the rink in River Valley was redone in, what, 2017, 2018?
Yeah, in a span of three years, that's three years, Mr. Chair, we did do River Valley, we did Leving. In Leving, we had a bigger project because we did the building as well, not just the rink, and we moved the Pidoo's rink to Goulard Park. So those were done approximately four or five years ago.
Okay. And so when the cost, like the $137 you had already accounted for, or thought you had accounted for, the increase in construction costs, because my understanding is that the River Valley rink, which I think would be the most similar project to what, as far as scope, to Cash Bay, came in at $60,000 or $70,000 at that time.
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand.
And we're doing the same design as far as, you know, galvanized posts and wooden boards, so there's no...
The scope is the same.
Correct, yeah.
And so that's already doubled in price, more than doubled in price, what you estimated for. And so the cost that actually came back is four times, five times, thank you for the math, five times the price that the same project cost in 2017 or 2018.
There, I just want to add, there would have been a bit more civil work because we have to tear down what's there now, which we did in other locations as well, but because the configuration that's there now, we have two smaller rinks, we want to maintain standard practice and have one evenly sized rink like we do in all of our communities. So there would have been a bit more civil, a bit more gravel, a bit more work to be done, but nothing extensive that would see it five times the cost, you know, from five years ago.
And then I guess I'll just have one more question. If we were to defer the project for the reconstruction to next year, would the staff recommendation be to add a little bit? Like, do you think that the $137 would have been reasonable if we had had competition or gone out a little earlier, like hopefully doing budget earlier? We can put the boat out earlier, like, is the recommendation from staff going to be to add a little bit of money to that $137, you know, to get us where we need to be?
One thing we could look at is, before coming back, the council is looking at what's happening to construction material costs. Are they going, are they on the rise or are they on the decline? Buying construction material now, it's almost like buying stocks, depending on the various time of year, the prices go up, then they go down. We will provide, again, our best estimate. The other option we could look at is potentially looking at having some of the work, the demo work done internally, if we know well in advance, and potentially have some cost savings there and have the, you know, the existing fencing and the existing boards decommissioned by our staff or our crews or in partnership with Public Works. We could look at that to try to bring in the cost to a more affordable price moving forward.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, I think this is a general statement that we would make, and that is that we will be doing the costing and assessment, given what's happened. We will be revamping, so it could be the same, it could be more, could be less, I doubt it, but, you know, I'm pessimist, but both, you know, I had a conversation with Public Works just this morning with respect to a project, and they still feel comfortable that a project that was way over was a reasonable-priced project, and they've been speaking to other companies saying, yeah, no, that was about right. So we will be vetting all of our numbers prior to presenting it to council and giving you our best estimates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you for your...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Estes.
Thank you, Chair Rebar, through you, to Mr. Poulain or the CEO. I'm hearing that the Cash Bay residents want to keep the two, two rinks, they want two rinks, keep the way it is. And you mentioned earlier that you want to bring it to a one rink like the other areas.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair, that's our intent, is to have the same type of, that we have in all of our communities. I've heard that from one resident, she seemed to express her concerns that, but we, I've heard it from one person, so we would have to potentially maybe provide an opportunity for people to comment on that, but that's, I know I've heard it from one. If you've heard it from more than one, then, you know, please share the information with us, we'll look into it. But we feel that having a standardized sized and same configuration of rink throughout our communities would be the best way to proceed.
Counselor Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you, I have been approached by others. It's been noted by others that they would like the opportunity that if we're able to keep our two, they would appreciate it. I do understand that we want to try to keep it the same for everyone, but my question to you, though, would be, is there a possibility to look and quote, if we keep it two smaller ones, would it be cheaper, right? I don't know, it might not be, right? We might be adding more boards, we might be adding more fencing, so on and so forth. However, would it be cheaper? Would we be able to look at the cost that way and try to keep the same size? And I know we had a discussion in the past where, you know, the outdoor rink in, here in town, the base is crushed home as opposed to pavement, which is a good idea, that your ice stays longer. And the other option would also be, or the other question, I guess, would be, if you have volunteers, would they be able to participate in assisting in the demolition of, or would there be any kind of liabilities? And I don't know, but if we have a group of individuals in Cash Bay that decide that, hey, come, and I 100% agree, and I understand that it won't happen this year, but if we're able to say, come next spring, a bunch of individuals get together with either staff here and assist of taking it down, if we're able to save costs that way, you know, I'm not sure if there's any liability to the municipality. But I think I'd like to see if we're able to, as opposed to saying no to the double pad-ish, let's call it that, if the cost is less, then even better. If it's more, a lot more significant, then 100%, I agree, go the other way. And just to add, I 100% understand, I mean, it's all over the news right now, what's happening in North Bay with their pad that they might have to cancel the whole thing because the cost is four times more, and which is in the millions, but every price has gone up. So if there's the possibility of getting an estimate of what would it be for a double and as opposed to a single, I think that'd be an excellent thing to provide the residents in Cash Bay. Thank you.
Through you, Chair, I'll say yes to all the above. I think when we re-tender, we can easily ask contractors to provide a quote for like-for-like, so replacing what's there now in the same, same size, same manner, and provide an additional price for a rink that's more conventional. That's an easy one, Counselor. And as far as volunteers, there's always liability, but we've done it in the past, we've had volunteers help us build a shelter next to the playground in River Valley. We had volunteers well involved in the project in Leving as well for the construction of the outdoor rink and the building there. So obviously, it's certainly doable, and if, you know, if we have a good base of volunteers that are willing to roll up their sleeves and help out, we'll manage the risk and we'll, we can get that done with their help, for sure. And if it lowers the cost, then it's easier for us to move forward with these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll just mention that I really like the idea of the volunteers demoing. I like the idea at first of tearing it down, maybe right after the ice is off in spring, then it'd save us some money, but with the volunteers, that'd be great. I'd sign myself up right away if that's an option, but there's also that Community Services Committee that I think that would be good, maybe to build a group of volunteers that be able to help with that come next year, once we get the ball rolling there. And then, yeah, I also do agree the info on two rinks would be pretty neat instead of just one, because I know when I was younger, it was pretty cool how the young kids who just wanted to skate would be on one, and then older, older guys and girls who wanted to play hockey and shoot the puck a little harder got to be on the other one, and it kept everyone safe. Sometimes when you go to, when we used to go to Pidoo's, it would get a little scary at moments when you have a little kid, they don't know, or the parents can't even skate either, or the kid can't skate, or, and then you're just colliding, and it causes a lot of issues, so we want it to be enjoyable for everyone. But other than that, so would we need a show of hands here on how we would like to go forward or just?
I think we're going to be looking at options and taking council's suggestions and comments that were made in the community into consideration when we look at, look at next year.
And I guess, one thing I've grown was, I was wondering, is there any volunteer work being done to try and raise some funds to help for the replacement of this in Cash Bay, or would it be something that could, we could maybe try and try a spearhead for next year if we're pushing this back for a year? If there's any sort of volunteer groups in Cash Bay that would be able to look into that?
I know that the, the, they're involved in fundraising, have this year been focused on the creation of a new Senate app. They did secure funding and stuff for that, and that's where their focus has been. So I don't think that there's any work being done towards the rink, but they do have a very active group of volunteers who really love the community there and are always willing to put in the work. So I just, you know, I know, I don't know that they've been focused on the rink, but they have been doing other good things.
And after seeing the field rink, how much it costs, and then the upgrade for this, now I'm going back to think that field rink was actually quite a bargain. Can you think of it for, to have a roof for a rink? Thanks, that does it for this subject. Oh, Counselor Estes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, I know we've talked a lot about future years and a bigger, I know within the memo, it speaks to doing about $4,500 in renovations for this upcoming year, so I just wanted to put out there that I'm supportive of that, if we can keep it safe and keep it running for the next year, and then look at a bigger rental next year. Just wanted to share that.
Okay, so those repairs will go forward, and that's still going to be a good budget.
Thank you. And next up?
Counselor Rebar, I'll just interrupt you for a moment. We have, we have hit five past eight, so by our procedural bylaw, we do have to take a break. Sorry to cut your time in half, but you'll get to, like, open the next segment as well. Madam Chair, I need to move our secretary for recess, please. Counselor Gany, Counselor Rebar.
It is moved by Counselor Gany and seconded by Counselor Rebar. Approximately 8:05 PM, a motion is tabled for a 10-minute recess.
All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
That's it.
Ron. Okay, welcome back to our maybe no care short recess. So we'll continue on to Community Services, please, Chair Counselor Robert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will pass it over to Mr. Vane for a capital project update.
Mr. Chair, just want to provide a brief update on our capital project to the council, being, getting closer to the end of summer and where we're at with these projects. Our, our various playground projects, I can say, have all been completed with the exception of the Janon Street Playground. We're working with the contractor supplier. They've got issues with equipment and labor and whatnot, so we're trying to narrow down a date that we'll hopefully be able to have that Janon Street Playground completed over the next month, month and a half. So for the residents that are looking forward to it, it should be done in short order. Two of our main projects are the heat exchanger and the dehumidifier at the Sturgeon Falls Westham Singh Recreation Complex. The heat exchanger project has been ongoing for some time now. But again, happy to say that we're at ninety-nine percent completed, and the dehumidifier were about at eighty percent, the units are in place. We are just needing to finalize a couple of things with the contractor, and those projects will be well said and done over the next couple of weeks. We've discussed the Cash Bay outdoor rink that was on our capital list this year. Obviously, that will not be moving forward in 2023. The field outdoor rink projects has incurred some delays. I've conveyed the information to Counselor Nickel, and she has conveyed that information to the, the local committees that have worked so hard on this. The delays come from the steel provider, manufacturer. And, and what they've, what the capital construction, the contractor that we award the contract to have indicated to us is that they've incurred a three-week delay because of shop drawings not being able to come in and the steel being delayed somewhat. So instead of a November thirtieth project completion date, the field outdoor rink is scheduled to be completed on December twenty-first. So hopefully, winter doesn't come too soon this year, and we don't lose any outdoor rink time in field, but I just want to assure everyone, we're well underway. We are looking at a three-week delay, but hopefully, no more than that. We are also proceeding quite nicely with the Werner Arena dehumidifier replacement. The RFQ has been completed and a contractor has been secured. The unit is now on order, and we're hoping that the, we won't incur delay because it's a like-for-like piece of equipment, and we're told that it's fairly easy to get. So the work will occur once the arena is open. But we've been given a six-to-seven week timeline where the dehumidifier will be placed at the Werner Arena. And that concludes our capital update.
Thank you, Mr. Vane, were there any questions, comments? I'll see you for the week.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I should have asked earlier, going back to the Cash Bay outdoor rink. We can assure the residents that this will happen next year? We assured them that it was happening this year?
Well, we, of course, we assured them that we're planning on doing it next year. So I'm going to sound like Oliver North for those of you, to the best of our knowledge, it will happen next year. Unless there are any unforeseen circumstances or bids. You know, we are going to be parking the money, and we are going to be looking at maybe providing a different assessment to minimize any uncertainty so that it does happen next year. Now, if we have multiple bids and they come in at two million dollars, we'll be coming back to council, and then you can provide us with the assurance that you will give us the additional money.
Thank you. And just you were mentioning about the Janon Street Park. I remember at the start of the year, there was another park, it was the Demerce Street Park that got down there.
No, that's not, that's not ours, that's, that's not for profit, I was saying, we don't.
Was there another park that was being?
We did, we did Leving, we did Field last year, and we also did Piet Street in Werner, and we did Le Blain, Pidus, Le Blain Street last year as well, yeah. So all of our playground projects took some time, but we've gotten all of them done except Janon Street. But that's, that's, that's coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, yeah, through Mr. Chair. Just a question about the Cash Bay rink. I don't know if that is under this, but it just popped up. Is the Trillium funding that we were applying, did we get any answers on that yet?
So we weren't as successful in applying for that project particularly, because when we wanted to go to tender, you cannot proceed to tender until you've received the approval of funding. And that would have only been in October. So we couldn't apply for that rink, and we couldn't apply for the rink in Field as well because it had already been awarded and started. So unfortunately, if we would have waited to get an approval, we would have completely missed the season, which is happening anyways, but we didn't have any way of knowing that. So we did not apply for that. So unfortunately, if, unfortunately for this year, but if they come out with around two of funding for, for community-type initiatives, we can certainly come back to council, and that would be a great project to proceed with.
Prepare ahead for next year.
Absolutely. That's a very good point, Counselor.
Thank you. That ended for Community Services, that too.
Thank you very much, and we have one more section under our community of the whole. And that is a Sewer and Water Committee. And for that, I'll pass it to our Chair, Counselor Peter Hane.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There should have been.
Sure, if you want. Sure, and then I'll quickly, you know, I'll quickly pass, there's, you know, the Werner system, water system has been problematic for the last several years for a variety of different reasons, use of chemicals and so, and so forth. The manganese issue was a very serious issue that, you know, that happened probably about five years ago due to limitations from the ministry with respect to the types of chemicals that they change regulations on. With the new chemicals, we seem to have caught or solved that. That being said, recent events in the last few months have created other issues that now have looked a little bit more closely at. So I would pass it on to our municipal engineer, Mr. Correll, who's been instrumental in assisting us and the community of Werner with this file. So Al, if you can provide a report?
Yes, yeah, the meeting about a, middle of July, I guess, we had a fire there. We had a lot of water complaints with groundwater at an unusual place right near the water plant. And so I know Jay is the one that said, we gotta, we gotta be able to try to solve this. And he put together, we invited all the people from Aqua, their regional office, and ourselves, and we had a meeting in Werner. And basically, all that's been done over the years is the Aqua produces water, puts it into the system, and the municipality takes care of the system in that they fix repairs, we flush the system. But it wasn't solving the base problem here. And the base problem is the, it's an old, older system, that was in the mid-seventies when it was put together. So we had a meeting with all the people, and we thought we'd try two new things. Well, not new things in, in the business, but new things to be done in Werner. And one was unidirectional flushing of the system, so you can try to get as much of the junk out of the bottom. The problem is, there's a lot of stuff in the bottom of these pipes that haven't been able to get rid of for a number of years. And after we did that, we said we swab it. The worst sections, the bigger sections, the two fifty pipes, what you're doing is you're taking foam swabs, and you're going to put them into a hydrant, and you're going to put them out at another hydrant, and you're going to keep running it through water pressure to get rid of all the stuff that's in the, in the bottom of the, of the pipes. So we started, we did the, in, I think it was July twentieth, we looked at, we did the unidirectional flushing. And you need specialty equipment, we had to get special equipment from Aqua in their regional offices. They have it in Sudbury, they brought it in for a few days. And, and our staff, we had to have all the public work staff, the distribution staff, opening valves, closing valves, making sure everything, because you can only have water going in one direction, and it has to be all cleaned. So we did that, we did the, the section coming from the water plant to the co-op, and we worked back from the water tower and worked back to Principal. So we did those two sections, and those are the, also the two sections that we want to do the swabbing. The swabbing was actually scheduled for the week after that. But when we were taking apart the hydrants, because you actually have to take apart the hydrants to actually put the swabs in, and they have to come out at the other end. So when we were doing that, there was hydrants in the system that we couldn't take them apart. They're, they're from the seventies, and we just couldn't, we just couldn't do them. So we're actually replacing the two hydrants that we couldn't use. One was replaced today, the next one is replaced tomorrow. And the swabbing is going to be done, I believe, yeah, next, the twenty-second and twenty-third next week. So we're going to, we're going to try to do that. While we were doing the directional flowing, we found that there's three pumps at the water plant, two of them are working, one wasn't working at all. And also, what we also found, what we didn't realize, is when the, these are old-style pumps that are, just work on and off. So basically, you push the water to the water tower, and the pumps are gate valves, and they stop. So the water gets pushed back through the whole system from the water tower to the water plant, but not going into the water plant, of course. But that's where the problem was, that's why it's on, on that one Car chase street is, is the, it's a dead end for a lot of the time. We didn't realize it. And one of the easiest ways to fix that is to put a VFD pump into the system. And one of the easiest ways to fix that is to put a VFD pump into the system, which is a variable speed pump. So in other words, instead of having stopping and starting and not very often, this way, the pump, the pumps will work slowly but all the time. So you won't have the problems, you won't have the dead ends at one end or the other end. It should keep it going. So when we're looking at the, we're, we're studying, we're studying to the water main from Sturgeon to Werner to bring the water there because of the poor quality of the Bev River. That was when we did the initial, it's about a ten million dollar project with the cost of everything. Now it's probably closer to fifteen or twenty million dollars, unfortunately. But that, that's maybe a good long-term solution. But I've been talking to the engineers we've been working with and I think it'd be really good that instead of starting in Cash Bay and working to Werner, we work the other way. We do the first section from the water plant back to at least sixty-four or maybe a little further. And so you'd have two ways out of the water plant. Right now, the water's only got one way out. So if something goes wrong, say on Principal or something, nobody's going to have water at the other end at all until it's fixed. And then you've got boil water, visors and all that. So I think that's happened a number of years ago, I guess. But if we can get the first section done to at least sixty-four and bring the water back, so you've got two ways for the water to go. And then you also solve this problem with dead ends. I was looking at the distribution system in Werner. It's essentially one long dead end. There's no, there's no way around it anywhere. There's dead ends all over. You've got to fix some of that. And that's one of the big reasons the five million dollar project in Sturgeon, we're doing the looping around to solve a similar project, problem. And I think that should be solved in Werner at the same thing. So long story short, or short story long, the, we're going to be swabbing next week. And, and we're going to be looking at, when we look at the, the big project, probably starting backwards and doing that. But in the meantime, we're going to have, we have to replace one of the pumps anyway at the water plant. So we're going to get a cost from our engineers and with Aqua to see how much it would cost to put the VFD in. And I think that would, that'll solve a lot of the problems and keep working on swabbing and flushing and, and working together with Aqua. I think if we've actually made a good partnership, unfortunately, it took this long before we, the Ontario Clean Water Agency and ourselves actually put both our staffs in there to try to fix the problem. So I think if we keep at it, we fix the, the pump in the, the plant. And I think the other one I didn't want to forget to talk about is the water tower itself. We had, right now, the water tower was built in nineteen eighty-eight. It's having significant problems with rust and everything on the inside. And that's one of the other reasons you're getting a lot of things in the water because it's falling apart in there and it's a lot of cast steel at the bottom. So you're getting a lot of rust coming back into the system. So we went out for bids. We received the bids on August ninth. We're hoping at this meeting, we're going to have a report to give you, but unfortunately, the Aqua wasn't able to, to do that. We're going to have one for the next meeting. But we have the bids. They are sixty percent over budget. Basically, we have half a million dollars and there's two of the three bids are within ten thousand dollars of each other, but it's eight hundred thousand dollars. But we do have in the system that we can, they, the prices are good for next year also. Because we knew that it was pretty tight to try to, to do this. Because you can't take the water tower out of service in Werner in the summer. There's just too much demand. It can only be done in the fall or the spring. And now that we found out the problem at the water plant, we can't do it until we fix the water problem at the water plant with the VFD driveway. If we put that in, that'll help solve the problem. So basically, the, we'll be coming back with another report on that sort of thing. But I think the prices we have, as I said, it's a sixty percent overrun. But all the prices we've been getting in the water and sewer and roads business, they're almost doubling. So it's almost less than we thought it was going to be. But it is a challenging situation. But I think, I think we're getting into the right track of really understanding the, the system there and how we can fix it so we don't get these problems in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Corel. If I may, I've got a couple of questions for you. Or anybody got questions first?
Yes, councillor Ristol.
Through you, councillor Pellerain. I just wanted to, to say it's great to see some advance. Some advancement happening in Werner with their water. I know there's been a lot of challenges there over the year and it's great, over the years, I should say. But to see some solutions coming and working in conjunction with Aqua, I think is great. I know the numbers aren't great in terms of what it's going to cost to repair, but it's good to see that we're identifying things and appreciate. And I'm sure the residents appreciate some of the activities that are happening in the last couple of weeks to try and clear things out there and make it a little bit more stable for them. So I just wanted to share that comment.
And I think one little side comment on that, I think, doing the, the work at the plant and, and putting the other main, water main back and just not relying on, on the, the big project, at least trying to, maybe with one tenth of the money, at least trying to get something there that works and people can rely on, I think is going to be important.
Madam Mayor?
Just to see what Alan just said, you know, I want to really thank our staff team and Aqua for trying to find solutions. If, you know, even if the rehab of the water tower costs eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand is a lot better than eight million or ten million or fifteen million dollars for a project that is a long water line. Like it, it seems if we, we've already have investment in infrastructure in Werner. And if there are solutions that we can find that makes that infrastructure work in that community, that's going to be a much better long-term solution. So I'd just like to thank Aqua staff and the municipal staff for their diligence in trying to find these solutions. And I, I think I'd just like to make one other comment and, and that is in regards to our service request process. So, you know, for, for our staff to be able to adequately respond to where the issues are and be able to identify, you know, the streets, the blocks, the houses that have issues. We really need the residents of Werner to, to help us by reporting those issues using our water testing services, reporting incidences of groundwater. So those can be tracked and mapped. And I'm sure that having that kind of data available to them will help the team that is trying to, to find these solutions, identifying, you know, where they need to look and what, what might need to happen. So, you know, it's one thing to, to have a post on Facebook that shows groundwater. But for that data, actually, to get to the people who are going to solve the problem, we need the residents to use our service request line so that that data can be, can be properly taken in by our staff. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, my, my mayor, I agree. I've been telling a lot of people in town and passing cards, service requests.
You have a, another informal system, which is the Werner Golf Course. Rest assured, I guess.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just, I appreciate the, the dead end information as well there because I took my drinking water operator course back in college. That that was the big no-no that they used to mention, right? Is not to have too many dead ends. So that could, I believe, what you're saying there, that it would potentially help the, the problem quite a bit if you can tie in some of those dead ends and have kind of more of a loop. Just thank you for that.
Any other questions? No, okay. I just have a couple of comments, mostly for the resident Werner. So I was there when the first that went for a ten from close to the church. There was a lot of particle of paint that was coming out. That's.
That's from the water.
Inside of the tank, yeah, from the ice going up and down in the wintertime. So I was talking to the guy that was working on it. So my other question. There, there is the plan to bring water from Cash Bay to Werner. It's going to be a one line, right? One pipe coming in. So when you were talking, like it's a one directional pipe in Werner, something happens. You're stuck. Nobody's got water on the other side. The same can be said about the, the pipe coming from Cash Bay or Sturgeon to Werner. Is that a concern? And I, I'm just asking that compared to the price that the project is going to cost? Compared to the cost that you add to replace the plant in Werner, which was around four million, four or five million dollars?
No, the, when we did the environmental assessment, the actual redoing the plant in Werner was more than bringing the water from Sturgeon.
Oh, it was?
Yes. Yeah, it was about five million dollars more.
Okay.
And the, the issue of, you know, you still only have the one line of failure. But I guess the one good thing about, there's enough, be enough pressure in that water line. Even if you, you had to take the Werner water plant offline, you'd still have forty to fifty pounds of pressure instead of the sixty-seven pounds of pressure. So you'd still have lots of pressure. You could still run anything without even going to the water plant, just running through the, the water from, from Sturgeon. But it's still better to go to the water plant and boost it and add more chlorine and the whole thing. But it's, the, the, the problem with your existing one is the, the quality of the water in the Bev River, right? That's, that's the real problem.
Those types of mains as well, Mr. Corel can speak to. But, you know, you can make that same argument with the entire town of Cash Bay because there's a main that leaves to Sturgeon. The water is produced in, in Sturgeon and goes through our system and there's a, there's a main that goes to Cash Bay. That main would be continued. We haven't had, there have been the odd leaks that they would find. But that has not impeded in my twenty-some years experience any water issues in Cash Bay at all. There'd be some, we, we would notice some water pressure decreases and we would know that there was something in the system. And that our crews are very adept at finding that. So the, the single source to Werner, I don't know if that would, it would be as big of a, an issue. I could tell you as well that the entire town of Markstey is serviced by Sudbury. So there's an entire single pipe that goes all the way through Markstey. So it, it is done. And it is, you know, and there are protections in place and safeguards in place to ensure that there isn't any damage to those systems.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's a simpler system, yeah. And in, in Southern Ontario, there's all over, yeah. Some cities, forty or fifty kilometers, they send the water to other people. It's not, it's not, it's doable all over.
So the, the plans that I read was to start work in two twenty-three and be finished in two twenty-four. That's, that's not happening, I know. Peter was telling me that the plant is good for probably another ten years. Is that accurate?
Well, that's the, that's the assumption that when the consultants looked at it, I was involved in the process. And they said, for, for another ten years, you shouldn't have any issues. And, but eventually, it's going to have to be replaced. And when you replace it, you're going to want it, as I said, we looked at the Cash Lake, we looked at different places. And, and the most effective way was to bring the water from Sturgeon because the water plant in Sturgeon is only at half capacity. And that's, that's probably the best thing. And also, it makes it a lot simpler. The, all you're really doing then is you're pumping it there and you're just repumping it at the plant. You don't have to go through all the processes and everything. You just, yeah.
All right, thank you. I had just petitioned, I had brought for the, how do you say, the pay station.
Right.
I think we're just going to forget this because I, I wasn't aware of the, when I spoke to that about people for Werner. We, let's grab this.
Well, they told you.
Yeah. First, we're going to get good water, then we'll talk about it.
Lovely lady at the Werner Golf Course who started that. But even, I'm glad Mr. Corel is here because it was further compounded since your petition with what Aqua said. And they said, that system is way too sensitive to start playing around, especially in the summer months with taking taking the water and, and filling the totes. That, that system just can't take it. It's, it's a very fragile system at best. So I, I think that between the staff that work for Sean Remmy or the distribution collection staff and the Aqua people, they're actually magicians in, in the, the way that they work that system and keep it afloat for the residents of Werner. I, I would just want to tell you that, that the residents of Werner are fortunate. But a young lady that's working at Aqua was working with the residents of Carche Street, they're on a daily basis. And the residents of Carche Street were providing them labeled water at every time. So there was a really good partnership. You should know, councillor, the residents and Aqua and our, and our people. So everybody's working together to fix this. So that was good to see when we saw that. Remember all those chips?
Yep.
I think so. If there's a shortage of nation jars, we probably have.
I would, yeah, I was there. I saw it.
Good, yeah.
Forget what I wanted to say. Okay, thank you. Back to you, my mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Pellerain. We'll now move into the regular portion of our council meeting, starting with our consent. Consent agenda items. There are several items that lined in the agenda. And I will have Madam read the resolution, please.
It is moved by councillor Corchane and seconded by councillor St. Louis. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three be approved as presented.
Any questions or comments, anybody? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, and then we'll move on to planning. We have three items, item six point two point one.
I'm here.
Also.
The clerk just read for August fifteenth. For July eleventh? Consent agenda?
No, it's the consent agenda for this meeting. It includes the minutes from the last council meeting.
Okay, is there an error on minutes of the last council meeting? I wasn't present at the meeting.
Yes, I, I noted that and I will make that change.
Okay, perfect. Sorry.
Okay, sorry. I asked any questions or comments? Okay, so just. Okay, thank you, councillor Gagnon. Resolution, thank you.
We're moving on to planning?
Yes, we're moving on to planning. We have three items, item six point two point one, Madam Clerk.
It is moved by councillor Corchane and seconded by councillor St. Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw number two thousand and twenty-three sixty-six, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand fourteen forty-five to rezone certain lands located at one twenty-nine Salter Street in Sturgeon Falls, being part of lots three, four, three and four and block A, Plan M three in the township of Springer, from general commercial to residential four, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its first.
Okay, so you have the planning report on that file here came through planning committee a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago. Did you want to speak to that at all, Madam Clerk, Madam Planner, in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a project to redevelop the, exist the old Godet fabric property on Salter Street into a residential apartment building. So working to assist us in increasing our housing stockings.
So it's formerly a commercial, it's an empty lot now. There was a fire on the property several years ago. And the proponent has proposed to build a twelve unit multi-residential. And so needs the zoning change order. Do you have any questions or comments on that? Councillor Rivera?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So I, I received a couple of emails that weren't, I guess they weren't formally to the municipality in regard to this property. I guess people are a little concerned with just the, the size of it. I was kind of wondering as well how twelve units would fit. I guess it's a three, four story building that's being proposed. But the one idea, because a lot of people are really against it, but I was trying to push that, meaning housing. So trying to find a compromise. And one thing that we kind of on was I see the one graph that show the parking coming out on to Salter, which is a much busier, more traveled road, quicker driving. When meanwhile, would there be any way that we could look at having the entrance going on Lily? Where there's almost no, no traffic. There's no foot traffic either. It would just kind of be a safer exit and entrance for people in Salter. And then other, other people mentioned also the idea of having some sort of, at least a, a minimum couple of trees to try and hide a big four story, three, four story apartment building, right? There were just these ideas that came up.
As for you, Madam Chair, with regard to the parking, we still have to go through the building permit and site plan stage. So that is something we can make note of and discuss with the proponent. What's being presented is mostly for representative purposes only. But once we get into the actual site planning. And as far as the trees, I don't know if there's any there, but we can certainly.
Yeah, no, it would have been just like a courtesy to try and plant some.
Oh, plant some.
Inside and on the lily side. More or less, the parking was more what people were a little more concerned about with the amount of traffic. Because if you have twelve units, this potential of twelve extra cars coming and going from that location, Salter's a very busy street. So while Lily almost has nothing.
Is there, I'm sorry, I'll ask a question. Is there not a buffer, landscaping buffers set out for our course? Like, is there some kind of visual attenuation or?
Not usually between residential uses, just between commercial and industrial and residential uses.
Sure, thank you. Sorry, any other questions or comments? Okay, so your comments are noted. And actually, I think the parking thing is a good idea. And that's something that would be negotiated at planning stages with the proponent between stuff. This is one I have.
I'm wondering why I have to.
Okay, and I thought, I thought in the planning meeting, somebody mentioned fencing or something like that, some kind of.
Well, I will go back to my notes first. I guess we're still going through the, the site planning stages. Like, we haven't gone through the site planning stages with the building. So it's certain things that we can address with the building.
All we're moving right now is the zoning change from C three to R four.
That's correct.
Correct. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Restool and seconded by councillor Tissier. Be it resolved that bylaw number two thousand twenty-three sixty-six being a bylaw, sorry, my mistake, being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing on the credit of the municipality of the sum of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the construction of the Portras Drain, nineteen seventy-two Delorme minor improvement. Come into force and take effect on the day of its passed.
So this is the item that we talked about in the committee of the whole. And does anybody have any additional questions on that we're covering last session? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is authorization. authorized further notice be given for changes. I'll let Madam Kirk read the resolution.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor Restool. Whereas on July the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, a public meeting was held by the West Nipissing Planning Advisory Committee for the purpose of considering an application to rezone the property located at nine hundred Canal Road from Shoreline Residential to Shoreline Residential, exception zone nineteen, to permit the construction of a second dwelling on the property. And whereas the Planning Advisory Committee has not recommended the proposed amendment. And whereas the applicant is requesting to amend the application to change the zoning designation of the property to C three tourist commercial. And whereas pursuant to section thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act, council must, may, prior to making a final decision and after a public meeting has been held, determine whether further notice be given regarding the proposed amended application. And whereas the proposed amended application is substantially different than originally proposed, be it therefore resolved that the council for the West Nipissing municipality hereby directs that further notice be given in relation to the proposed amended application to rezone the property at nine hundred Canal Road from Shoreline Residential to C three tourist commercial. And be it further resolved that the Planning Advisory Committee hold a further public meeting for the purpose of considering the amended application.
Carrie. That was a long one. Would you like to give a background on that, Madam Kirk?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, what took place, there was an application by a resident to rezone the property to build an additional dwelling on the property. The Planning Advisory Committee did not recommend the proposed amendment, largely due to the insufficient lot size of the existing undersized lot. The proponent has subsequently withdrawn or is requesting to withdraw that application and amend it to change the property to C three tourist commercial, which lot size would be more in keeping with the amount of land that is there. It would also permit the property to be used for recreational rental purposes.
Okay, questions or comments on that?
It will come back to planning advisory if this resolution is.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie. There, I will move to the new business portion of the agenda. And I'll start with the award of Toulouse Water and Sewer.
It is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Tissier. Whereas five tenders for the Toulouse Crescent Water and Sewer Installation were opened on July the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three by the Director of Corporate Services and Public Works Manager. And whereas council concurs with the recommendations received, be it therefore resolved that tender for the Toulouse Crescent Water and Sewer Installation be awarded to Lebel Brothers Excavating for the sum of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars plus HSD.
Okay, questions on that? All in favor? Carrie? Next item.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor Restool. Whereas at the council meeting on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Integrity Commissioner presented a report on an investigation carried out with respect to a violation of the Code of Conduct. Be it therefore resolved that council accepts the report and the recommendations of the Integrity Commissioner.
That's not in the. Okay. I just want to check that the councillors who were not present at the last meeting had an opportunity to review that report and it was sent to you. Okay, so any other questions or comments on this, on this file? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor Corchane. Whereas the membership of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities was terminated in two thousand eighteen. And whereas the benefit of membership was reviewed during the council meeting held on July the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Be it therefore resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality authorizes the municipality's membership with the FCM, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities be reinstated.
Okay, again, did you have an opportunity to review that information? Okay, questions or comments on that item? Okay, councillor Rebar?
Sorry, to you, Madam Mayor. I'm still kind of on the, at the last meeting, we were mentioning, we're just discussing our ideas on it. And I was more on the side of, in that time where we're trying to scrounge some money, seeing that we have a lot of memberships and what could this membership potentially give our municipality? There's a reason why we kind of let go of that membership in the past. So I was just wondering, maybe, maybe this isn't the right time to renew it. If we had some sort of airports or railway system or Coast Guard or some sort of coast or, you know, that we maybe share some more with the Federation of Federal Municipalities when it comes to their kind of jurisdiction. But I understand it's council's wishes, so.
Thank you, councillor Tissier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm on the same lines as councillor Rebar. We don't have any federal assets, let's say. Also, the RONA and the AMO are geared towards municipalities and province-wide. And the Federation of Canadian Municipalities membership, we still have access to all their information online as well. And we can still apply to their training or what they have available. And it's mostly like countrywide. Well, through AMO and RONA, they do consult outside of the province as well. So for me, the membership, technically, I went fine for it. Thank you.
Councillor Pellerain?
Just a question, Madam Mayor. Like, let's say the Association of Municipalities Ontario, six thousand bucks. Is it the same price that's it for the city of North Bay for a membership? Or does it go ratio?
For AMO, I'm not, it's a good question. For AMO, I'm not sure. But usually, they're based on size. So it's a base cost plus a per capita cost. And I know that that's the way that the, the same with the Canadian, Federation of Canadian Municipalities is the same. So it's based on your population, your census data population numbers. So a city like Toronto would pay a lot more than a, than West Nipissing does.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three. Okay, that is defeated, thank you. Next item.
It is moved by councillor Corchane and seconded by councillor St. Louis. Whereas council considered a staff report regarding, a report from staff regarding the regulation of backyard chickens at the meeting of July the eleventh. And whereas council has agreed that public consultation be undertaken, be it resolved that staff is authorized to proceed with public consultation on the matter of regulations for backyard chickens in the West Nipissing municipality.
So we discussed that in the committee of the whole last meeting. Can you just describe what the consultation will look like?
Three, Madam Chair, I think that council had agreed that we look at an online consultation with a portal to provide people with the opportunity to provide their feedback on the matter.
Okay, all those in favor? Or sorry, any other questions or comments? But, okay, all those in favor? Thank you, Carrie.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor St. Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw number two thousand twenty-three sixty-eight, being the vehicle for hire bylaw for the municipality, come into force and take effect on the day of its passed.
Okay, again, that was, we've gone over this for a couple of weeks now. Anybody have any final questions on the bylaws being presented? Okay, councillor Tissier?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just stuck on that definition of broker. I don't know, last time I mentioned it, did you?
I wasn't able to, I guess I don't quite understand the question, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Sorry, didn't hear. What was the definition of what?
The definition for broker on page four of thirty. Like, what's the purpose of and how it's written? To me, the interpretation I'm getting is that, I'll just read the definition. Broker means a person who accepts orders for dispatches of a vehicle for hire. So that I understand. And which vehicles for hire are not owned by that person or that person's immediate family or employer. That's the part that I don't understand, that second part.
Okay, so I'm through, okay, I think, I think I understand. A broker would be like a third party who would be sort of, he's not the owner of the taxi stand, he's not the owner of the vehicles, but he's the person who actually takes care of the dispatch.
That's right.
Yes.
So when it comes to providing a license, if the broker is also an owner.
They would require both.
But if the broker can't not own a vehicle, am I reading this right? That they would need to get a license for the vehicle that the broker owns? But stating that the broker cannot own.
Yeah.
So that's.
I think councillor Tissier has a point. I think that if the broker is not the owner of the vehicle and is dispatching, then that's a broker. But if you're calling the owner directly and the owner is dispatching themselves, then under the definition of broker, then they wouldn't need a license.
For each.
You understand?
Yeah, I do. I'm just thinking in the past, our current, the previous taxi business had both licenses, owner and broker licenses.
It's just the way this is written is that the broker, like, wouldn't be able to own a vehicle. So he wouldn't be able to get a license for the vehicles.
I don't think the intent that it precludes him from having a license. I think it's just they're two separate things. And if you were both, you would need the two licenses.
But based on the definition, it doesn't match what you're providing in the licensee. To my, that's what I, I am. My connection.
Okay, I, I'm gonna have to, if council wants to defer this item while I do some further investigation, because I do apologize, I didn't get the answer for that.
No, that's okay.
I think we need a motion to defer.
Okay, we would need a motion to defer.
Yeah, I'll request some motion to defer.
Councillor Tissier would like to make a motion to defer to the next meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded. Councillor St. Louis? All in favor of the referral? That's Carrie. Need a minute, she won't play.
No, I got it in my head.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the next item. We'll bring that back. And if Madam Kirk needs any further clarification, we can work on that the next week or two or three. And the next item in the agenda, six point five point six, is L I N O, a request.
It is moved by councillor Restool and seconded by councillor Tissier. Whereas council has requested, has considered a request for financial assistance from Improvisation du Nord de l'Ente. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality authorizes the financial contribution of one thousand five hundred dollars to Lino.
Okay, questions or comments on that item? Also, as I mean? Okay, seeing none, I'll put it to a vote, all those in favor? Two. Three. That is defeated.
It is moved by councillor Restool and seconded by councillor Tissier. Be it resolved that council authorizes an exemption from the West Nipissing Noise Bylaw one nine 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 slash seventy-five for the following date and location. Forty-one eighty-seven, Highway five thirty-nine in Field on September the second, two thousand twenty-three, until one AM.
Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Pellerain and seconded by councillor Rebar. Be it resolved that the two thousand twenty-three second quarter financial variance report for the West Nipissing municipality be received.
Questions or comments on financial reports? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by councillor Rebar and seconded by councillor Pellerain. Whereas two tenders for the Werner Fire Station roof replacement were opened on August the third, two thousand twenty-three by the Director of Corporate Services and the Fire Chief. Whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it resolved that the tender for the Werner Fire Station roof replacement in the West Nipissing municipality be awarded to two six two two seven four three Ontario Limited, operating as Al's Mechanical and Construction, for the sum of fifty-nine thousand dollars plus HSD.
Question?
Three, Madam, I just wondered, are we in budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Carrie. And then we have two items under that, that's a, also, maybe there's new business. Thank you. So we've got two items under an addendum, which was placed on your desk for the seat. The first being a request for municipal letters.
It is moved by councillor Gonye and seconded by councillor Pellerain. Whereas council has received a request from Damon and Drew Bureau, the owners of the Bureau's barn, to provide support for a fall fair event to be held at one one two zero zero Highway sixty-four in the West Nipissing municipality. in the West Nippising municipality by declaring the event to be municipally significant. Be it therefore resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality declares the fall fair to be held at 11200 Highway 64 in Werner, hosted by Damon and Drew Bureau, operating as the Bureau's barn, to be in, on September the 16th, 2023, to be a mu- municipally significant event.
Thank you. Uh, if I could, I just asked a question of our CAO. Are these fairly standard as far as that influences, uh, special agent permits or like, these types of requests? So there's no way that should be staffing perspective.
There's usually a circulation that, uh, you satisfy fire, uh, regulations and a variety of different issues, and they sign off on that prior to.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. And then second.
It is moved by Council Palery and seconded by Council Gagne. Whereas a request has been received from the St. Palery Davina Church to use the Cash Bay Hall at no charge for the purpose of parish fundraising events, uh, being electronic bingo. Be it resolved that council authorizes the use of the Cash Bay Hall at no charge by the St. Palery Davina Committee for the purpose of fundraising electronic bingo.
Thank you. Um, let's see. I'm sorry, was that? There was a, just a brief memo on that? So there is a memo that was included, uh, on your desk. And, uh, I would just, uh, uh, point out that the memo, um, does, uh, reference back to the, uh, key waiver policy. Um, and the fact that religious organizations are generally, um, ineligible for that exemption. Um, now that's, uh, to council, whoever they want to make an exception on that. But, uh, uh, according to the policy that we have in place right now, um, then, just, right. Would like to. So there, uh, you'll see the letter there. Any questions or comments on, uh, Council St. Louis?
Is there, like, through you, Madam Chair, is there a way of finding out why religious organizations are not, uh, or are part of the ineligible applicants?
Uh, is there a way of finding out? I think it will probably go by, um, by recollection. I, I believe, uh, a council that passed has indicated, uh, that, uh, religious organizations of any kind, uh, were, were, were not included in, in fee exemptions. Uh, there could be, uh, fact that they collect revenues from other sources, um, you know, and, and they, they do have fundraising abilities on their own. Uh, I would hesitate to, uh, to speak much more about religious organizations. They are already tax exempt on their, uh, their buildings. Uh, and so, you know, uh, the council of the day, uh, passed this policy. You have a policy that says that, uh, they're, they're not included. Um, council always has, uh, the ability to provide exemptions to a policy. Um, my recommendation to council is, if you do that too many times, you may want to revisit the policy, uh, if you're gonna start creating precedents that way. But I certainly take no position on this, council. Uh, given how this transpired, there was some lost paperwork over the summer months, and it came, uh, to me, to my attention almost at 4:00 p.m. today, so I just included it. If, uh, you know, we probably would have told the proponent that they, uh, you know, that they're, they are not allowed. Uh, but we didn't say that at the time. And so that's why, given the fact that we didn't say that, it's before you, uh, tonight.
Any other questions, Council Tessier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, do we know what the fundraising is for? Is it for the community or just for the, like, the church itself?
I think it said parish fundraising, I believe. Uh, yeah, I, I don't have that question, because the.
Oh, to continue operate, okay, I got the answers.
Or maybe, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I got my answer.
It is the parish, yes. Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Uh, Council Rebar?
Oh, Council.
Okay, sorry, Council Restool.
Might not have, through you, Madam Mayor, might not have the most popular response to the request. But I think, uh, looking at the reason for the fundraising request is to help them continue their operations. My own personal, political, whatever position's been, that we don't usually mix state and religion. I don't think we should be starting to provide free services for organizations that has been mentioned through other focuses this evening. They have other sources of funding and fundraising. And if this is just strictly to continue their operations, there's a lot of different religious organizations in the community. And I wouldn't want to open that, uh, that Pandora's box that it could become with requests.
Council Rebar?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Similar to what Council Restool was mentioning, I believe that if it's in the policy, uh, Mr. Barbour brought up some good reasoning. And then I also believe that, like, as to why maybe they weren't allowed to apply to religious groups, I believe also, once you allow one, just a lot of churches in this policy. And I, I imagine there'd be a lot of nights that would be requested to be off, especially come the holidays and such. So, uh, the, typically churches also have some sort of hall or ballroom. Churches, I'm not too sure about this one. But, uh, I would also like to keep it separate from politics and religions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll put it to the vote. Uh, all in favor? Okay, that's defeated, thank you. Okay, uh, that, uh, wraps up, uh, what looked like a very long agenda. And yet, here we are, only at 9:15, so we, we are at the end? Oh, yes. I will, uh, I will do, uh, just a brief NERS report, uh, in that, um, we have a, a group of councillors who will be leaving this weekend to go to, uh, our first AMO conference, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Uh, I'm very pleased to report, um, that thanks to, uh, the work of Mr. Barbour and our staff team, uh, we have been granted both of the delegations that we've applied for. Uh, so during the conference, our group will be Minister of Energy and Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, um, for, uh, everybody but probably me and, uh, Council Restool. Uh, these will be their first, uh, uh, delegation. So that, it should be, uh, some fun times and an opportunity, uh, to learn a little bit about, uh, how the process works in, in navigating and lobbying and advocating our needs to, uh, our provincial government partners. Uh, and on one other note, uh, you know, when, uh, just after the election, I was, uh, super proud, uh, that we could boast that we had councillors in their twenties, in their thirties, in their forties, in their fifties, and in their sixties. And as of today, uh, Council Kosheng has, uh, ruined that for us. Uh, and I would just like to say on behalf of, uh, myself, your council colleagues and the municipal staff, happy 30th birthday, uh, Council Kosheng. Uh, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, kind of sad that we no longer have one in our twenties, but, uh, but you'll still, uh, we'll, we'll keep it great. So thank you and happy birthday to you, Council Kosheng. And we will, uh, move into, uh, closed session. So if I can have a, uh, resolution.
It is moved by Council Palery and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that we proceeding to closed meeting is authorized in section 239.2 of the Municipal Act to discuss the following labor relations or employee negotiations relating to the West Nippising Professional Firefighters Association Local 1530.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Carrie.